Okay, this is the City of Marshalltown Council Agenda. And we're in the council chambers at 10 West State Street. It's February 22nd, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Notice to the public, the mayor and city council, welcome. Comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are requested to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less, so others may be given an opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council, and not to any counselor specifically. It is a discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Calling the meeting to order, if you can stand and remove your hats, and please do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Gowdy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Lottehoff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Before we do the mayor and council comments, we've got an award deal to do. What's the chief?
Do you want to go ahead and do that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's on.
Good evening, Dave Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So, we're here to do a couple of things. The first thing is Years of Service Award, and I would like to present this to Nathan White, and we'll talk a little bit about, more about Nathan here in just a minute. And I'd like to present him with his 15 Year Service Award. Okay, the second thing that we're here to do tonight is, I know that in the past I've told you that the fire service is steeped in tradition, and one of those things that happens in the fire service is what's called a pinning or a badge ceremony. And that's what we're, that's what we're here to do tonight. The ceremony's not just for the employees themselves, but it's for their families as well. And you can see, both of their families are here, their spouses, and their, and members of the fire department themselves. The job of the fires, the firefighter takes them away from their families on holidays, birthdays, and anniversaries, and none of us would be able to do this job without the support of family. So today, we're, tonight, we're here to promote Nathan White and Curtis Rowley. Both of these gentlemen have stepped up and taken additional classes and the necessary certification to be promoted, and in addition, both participated in promotional processes in October, and as a result, they are here tonight to be honored for their hard work. Being an officer in the fire department can be difficult and rewarding, and for me, as the fire chief, this is one of those rewarding moments. Both of these gentlemen have stepped up and are willing to accept leadership roles within the fire department, and I couldn't be prouder of them. So first off, Nathan White. This is his wife Kayla. Nathan is being promoted to the rank of captain. How far you stick the pin in is totally optional. And Curtis Rowley and his wife Ashley, and Curtis is being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. If I could get you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nathan White.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowmely swear.
I will serve the citizens of Marshalltown.
Serve the citizens of Marshalltown.
And the firefighters of the Marshalltown Fire Department.
Firefighters of the Marshalltown Fire Department.
With honor and integrity.
With honor and integrity.
I will.
I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe and enforce.
Observe and enforce.
The ordinances of the city of Marshalltown.
The ordinances of the city of Marshalltown.
I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my abilities and judgment.
To the best of my abilities and judgment.
The next person to be recognized tonight is somebody who you see very frequently here in council chambers. For the past 20 years, Michelle Spahnheimer has been a dedicated employee of the city of Marshalltown. I'd say she is our most senior department head team member now, which is a wonderful thing. Michelle is our source of history. She can often remind us of things that happened well before some of us were here, which is a very good thing at times, so that we know maybe what not to try again, or what has worked in the, has not worked in the past, or has worked in the past. She's been a very big part of many different plans that have taken place in this community, and has really, and since I have been here, been a source of information, someone who's always willing to step in and help, and someone who is never saying no to an idea. And I think that is something that benefits not only our community, our organization, and our team here in the city of Marshalltown, but it also benefits our community, because she's always looking for different resources to bring in. One quick example, Michelle had been following the All-America City Application Round for this year, and went ahead and submitted an application on behalf of the, the city of Marshalltown here just this last week. And that was something she saw, she knew what it was like from the past experience of, of being nominated and a finalist, and she went ahead and she did it. And so, that is Michelle in a nutshell, basically, right there. And so, thank you, Michelle, for 20 years of service, and I think I have to say what I know the mayor would say, which is that he honestly did tell me, whatever you do, don't let Michelle go. And so, I think the me business is going to keep her here at the city for a little bit longer, but I do know she has a retirement clock already in place. So, thank you, Michelle, for your service.
Did I make it live this time?
Yep, you are good to go.
Okay, good. Yeah, I didn't say exactly that. Actually, what I really said, as I recall, was, just make sure you keep Michelle happy and around here, because she's been so instrumental. You didn't mention the millions of dollars worth of the lit grants that the city has gotten, and the number of houses that are now safe for kids because of her work to do. And that's, that's just another example of the kind of hard work we've gotten out of two decades from Michelle. I, I couldn't say anything nicer about her, about any city employee that I've ever run into in the years that we've been in Marshalltown. So, thank you. Now, on to item F, and that's the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it, to get on the floor?
Jessica, comments first?
Oh.
Yes.
Your Honor, I think there were some council members who wanted to make some comments under item E.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yeah, let's go for that.
Joel, I didn't want to, I was just making sure everybody had a chance. I just didn't want to, you know, leave somebody out.
I would like to bring up Police Chief Mike Tupper's article in the TR. I thought it was a very, very good article on racism. I don't think I could have said it better. I hope if you haven't had a chance to read it, that you really do. It speaks volumes, it really does. We're better than that. Thank you.
Spot on, thank you. I thought the article in the TR did a nice job of cap, well, there was an editorial in the TR, and I thought the comments that were the follow-ups to it online were, were good too and encouraging. Okay, if we didn't, sorry, I couldn't hear the first part of the meeting, so if people weren't given an opportunity upon the city council to just make comments in general, or the city administrator make comments in general, let's do that. If anybody else wishes to speak before we move on to the consent agenda. Well, unless I'm muted again, let's go ahead and get back to the consent agenda motion.
Your Honor.
I move for approval.
Thank you. If, we can ask for a second, but if somebody wished to speak, to remove items from it, for instance.
Yes, Your Honor, this is Gary. I'd like to remove item 12 from the consent agenda, please.
Is the motion still good with item 12 removed, sorry?
Yes, Your Honor.
Second.
There's a second? Let's call the roll.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottehoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Very good. That is carried. On to the next item, which would be to address number 12 on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, when I will read that, please.
Would you like me to read the other items on the consent agenda first?
No, that's what we usually do, isn't it? Now, I don't have my cheat sheet here. Please do.
Approved minutes for the February 8th, 2021 meeting, and the February 15th, 2021 meeting, and the bill list in the amount of $1,584,201.85. Received the building permit report for January 2021. Approved January 2021 monthly financial statements. Approved liquor license renewals for Quickstar Store 706 at 810 South 3rd Avenue. Casey's General Store, number 1441 at 1402 South 12th Avenue. Dave's at 207 East Main Street. Approved change of ownership for liquor license for the Dollar General Stores, 408 South 9th Street, and 2413 South Center Street. Resolution approving contract change order number six for the Manhole and Point Repair Project. Resolution approving an easement to Interstate Power and Light Company for the installation of a communication system. Resolution ordering construction of the Sixth Street Softball Parking Lot Improvements Project PRK 21001, setting a public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost, and directing publication of notice to bidders. Resolution to approve CRRSAA Act Grant Agreement Number SF-242 for operational expenses for the Marshalltown Municipal Airport. Resolution authorizing loan to Urban Renewal Area Number Two Tax Increment Revenue Fund. Resolution approving an economic development grant to Marshalltown Company for the demolition of Dunham Bush Building at 811 East Main Street. And resolution approving contract change orders number 70 to 72 for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum Renovation Project, a decrease of $76.14.
Okay, thank you. Those items, those 12 items that have been approved, and let's now address item number 12.
So moved, Your Honor? Second.
Second.
And that is, just for the record, the Resolution 2021 041, approving offers to buy real estate for the purchase of 328 330 South 3rd Avenue.
And Your Honor, if I may?
Time for discussion, you may, yes.
I just wanted to pull this out of the consent agenda, because, and thanks, Jessica, for pulling that up on the screen. This is the building at 330 South 3rd Avenue, that's at the base of the 3rd Avenue Viaduct. This building has been vacant for years. I just want to congratulate the family and the Marshalltown city staff for coming to an agreement to take possession of this eyesore and get it torn down. We can now proceed with that. I know a lot of people think progress is building new streets and, and housing. To me, this is just as much a sign of progress in the city of Marshalltown, getting rid of something like this. Everybody sees this. Not everybody sees the new streets we're building, or, you know, you know, progress of repaving the clarifier tanks, you know, wastewater, and the things we have to do. To me, this is so, this is so important, that I wanted to pull it out of consent agenda, that we are listening to people, we are doing things, and we're trying to make Marshalltown better, and get rid of some of these dilapidated buildings. So I just want to congratulate the family that stepped up, and the staff. To me, this is, this is big. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would any other counselors like to speak before I ask if there is any public comment, since it is now open for a vote? Open the mics, please.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Okay, that's 15 seconds. Let's go on to the next item, G, Resolutions. What's the first one, please?
We need to vote, Your Honor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottehoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Thank you. And before we go to the resolutions, I assume there was some discussion, and a welcome to Counselor Lottehoff. I've done it online, but I haven't done it personally or publicly, and so let me congratulate you on the election, and welcome you to the city council. Again, I know you've been here before, but it's good to have you back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. On the, let's now go on to resolutions. G, unless I've skipped something else, what's the first one?
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the final clarifier project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number WPC 20001, in the amount of $1,064,000.
Entertained a motion.
So moved, Your Honor? Second, Your Honor?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. We opened bids last Tuesday for the final clarifier floor repair projects, and received a low bid from WRH Incorporated for $1,064,000, which is a nice, nice amount. Our engineer's estimate was $1.26 million. So as you can see in the resolution, we had a nice spread, 1064, 1257, and 1513. We will get to work as the warmer temperatures allow, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none. How many people are live there tonight, on the council?
Counselors, or?
Yeah, councilors. I'm trying to gauge whether we need to open the mics on this one, or ask if the clerks received any written comments. I doubt there's anything controversial, or we, we need to invite public comment, unless anybody raises a hand, or if anybody online, or on the phone wishes to spend 15 seconds.
There is a hand raised, Your Honor.
Okay, let's unmute the mics, unmute the phones, do whatever you need to do to let people have a say.
The lines are unmuted.
Mute the mics and call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottehoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. On to the next resolution, one able.
Resolution setting public hearing prior to approving the budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, and certifying the property tax levy.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved, Your Honor? Second.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, we're almost done through the budget process. So for all the reports that we've given you over the last four council meetings, we have updated some numbers, and I have outlined those in the memo. So, going to go through a few of those. So, we're under contractual agreement to pay MCBD $32,000. So I did need to add that to the general fund expense, and then also to transfer the money in from TIF to the general fund, which leaves a net zero balance, net zero difference in the general fund for that purpose. Also showed the local option sales tax being used to fund MCMIC-TV for $40,000. The police and fire building station did have a reimbursement, so I added that revenue, $26,000 revenue. Fund 362, I did add the bond premium and closing costs for that. And fund 610 and 611, as you know, and is on the next two agenda items, is the refinancing of the 2015 sewer revenue bond. So I had to increase the payoff of that, and then also increase the revenues for the new money coming in, as, as well as the closing costs for that. So fund 312, the airport, as I discussed last week or so, we, we kind of changed the allocation between fiscal year '21 and '22, between these different items. Overall, you can see the change, one's, one's higher, one's lower, et cetera, down there. So now, we'll go over the budget documents. So the format is a little bit different this year. This is the state form that's now online, so all the cities enter the information online, so there's no more Excel spreadsheet being sent to the state. So, as we've talked about before, we've taken the full advantage of the $8.10 regular general fund levy. We are going to levy $150,000 for the transit. That money comes into the general fund, and then we transfer it back out. We're levying $100,000 for the Fisher Community Center. We're levying $315,000, I got to get my sheet here, $215,000 for the insurance for our liability. As you recall, we talked about our premiums going up because of both the tornado and the dracio. And then, for the Marshall County Local Emergency Management Commission, we're levying $33,000. Again, that's one of those that comes into us and then goes right back out the door. And these levies here, and the property, and these special fund revenues, they were on the maximum property tax levy from last week, that the public hearing was on. But wasn't it, but what wasn't included on that was the voted levies, which is the band for $11,000 in the library, for $245,000. The emergency levy is if you need to levy more than the 810 levy, which we do. So, we levied another $245,000 for that. The police and fire retirement, $1.2 million. We can levy as much as we need, so that's what we have budgeted. FICA and IFRS, again, as much as we need, so $771,000. And then, other employee benefits, which would include health insurance, workers' comp, et cetera, almost $2 million. And then, we have the debt service levy of $995,000. Those are the GO bonds that we're paying, using principal and interest for. And the capital improvement plan that goes to the general fund, so that's $615,000. So overall, $14 million. If you go to the rate, the rate is going to be 15.3777, which is .006 lower than the current year. Any questions on this sheet? Where's the little?
I was going to say, we've got too much stuff.
Okay. The cash balance sheet just shows you what we came in with at June 30th of 2020, what we expect to change in FY '21 in our ending 630-21 balances, and then our activity for FY '22, and our ending 630-22 projected balances. I went over this a few weeks ago. The difference is that now I have the information from Marshalltown Waterworks, which we also include, so that's added in now. Just trying to give you all updated sheets from all the material that we went over. You'll recognize this as well, the budget comparison report. So these are all new, updated, clean numbers. Any changes I made, I did put in the memo. And this one is just a summary report, which is more in line with your monthly financials that we give you, where it shows the, the fund and the revenues and expenses by fund. So as you know, we transfer money between funds, and so this recaptures what we're transferring. I won't spend a lot of time on this, it's pretty self-explanatory. So there's FY '22. The transfers on the budget forms itself will be the $10.786 million. These two down here are just internal between the inter-funds, so we don't pick them up in the budget system, but we do transfer money during the year for that. And then here is FY '21. Transfers, same thing, going through there. I'm going to go back up to the budget forms. So after the certification sheet, you have the proposed maximum tax levy for those certain, certain items, which we already had the hearing last week. You have the fund balance, which you can see from FY '20, '21, and '22 by category, and this will match the cash sheet. It does include the Marshall Waterworks. Your local emergency management support. Then we get into the reestimated costs for expenditures. Again, it's broken down by category. And if you recall, so this gives you the authority to spend, so they're by category, so public safety, public works, health and social services, et cetera. So you can overspend in one row or another, but So, you can overspend in one row or another, but overall, you can't exceed that amount. So, that's all of those. And you'll see the transfers coming in down here, going in and out. And then we have the revenues for FY '21. So, overall FY '21, a year ago, we didn't know we were gonna have a drachio, we didn't know we were gonna do new bonding, we didn't know we were gonna do refunding, so all these numbers have been updated for that. So, in the past, we have done a budget amendment at this point in time, but with the ongoing drachio costs, we decided to wait until May, before the end of the fiscal year, to do the budget amendment for FY '21. And then we come into the expenses for FY '22. So, there's still a little leftover for the drachio and the FEMA money. So, that's what all those forms are for. Then we have the adopted budget summary, so it summarizes all six of those sheets that were prior, has the revenue and expenses on one sheet. And the long-term debt schedule, this is one of the first schedules I brought to you at the beginning of the budget. It lists out the principal and interest payments, and then if there's something other than the levy that's going to pay for it, then that's what this column is for. So, it could be TIF funds, it could be enterprise funds, et cetera. And then we use 78% of the local option sales tax for property tax relief, so that brings down the levy. The local long-term debt schedule totals just breaks it out between the general obligation bonds and the non-GO bonds. So, GO bonds, you have the authority to actually use property tax levies for, but if you recall, we have some other funding sources that we use with TIF and enterprise funds, so that drops that. So, here's your notice of the public hearing that will be published in the paper. And then I also wanted to share with you the local option sales tax. I discussed this with you several meetings ago and you made some decisions, so I incorporated those decisions that you made. So, you can see your property tax relief at the end of FY '22 should be over $1 million. Your council designated 1.6 million, and we still have about $500,000 for capital projects in the local option sales tax fund. And then the last document is the Marshalltown Water Works budget. So, I put that in there since they're included in ours. So, we do need to set the public hearing, March 22nd, and if you want to make changes, you can either make them now, I will make the changes before it goes to publication, or at the hearing, you can lower it, lower it then. I would prefer that you do the latter, but you could lower it today, but the disadvantage is you cannot raise it then. So, whatever's published, you can't exceed. So, any questions on any of those? If not, we'll need a resolution for setting the hearing.
Do you need a motion, Your Honor?
I thought we had one, but I-
We do have one, Your Honor.
You have a motion on the table.
And a second?
There is a motion and a second, Your Honor.
All right. Any other, well, I guess we've already called for questions, and that would have included comments. Let's open the phones, microphones, megaphones, whatever.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Fifteen seconds up. Let's vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Thank you, that one carried. To enable, Madam Clerk, please read the next resolution.
Resolution setting public hearing prior to approving the five-year capital improvement program, CIP, for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021 to 2025.
Entertain a motion.
So, moved, Your Honor?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. We've had a few changes on this one as well, which I have outlined in the memo, again, mostly just reallocating the either revenue expenses between fiscal year '21 and '22. So, you've had this brought to you, this would be the third time. So, hopefully, this is the last one for the capital improvement plan. As a reminder, the funds 030 and 032 is what we use the property tax levy for, for capitals. And I did want to remind the council of the purchasing policy. So, if it's in the plan, if it's no more than 10% difference than the budget amount, does not need to come back to council unless it's in aggregate, change orders are more than $25,000. And all vehicles still come back to council. So, are there any questions on this document?
Any questions or comments? Let's unmute the mics again.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Three, two, one, roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Okay. And if you would, the next line item.
Public hearing and resolution expressing intent to enter into a sewer revenue refunding loan agreement.
Thank you. I declare that public hearing is open right now. The time is 6:13 PM. Did you receive as clerk any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Let's open every mic on the phone for 15 seconds for your comment.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Mute the mics. Time now for staff review.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Now, this is pretty straightforward. We have a 2015 sewer revenue bond that we're paying 2.69% interest. We think we can refund that for 1.5% or lower. It's a savings of over $200,000, and we are accelerating the last two years of payments. So, the bond sale would be next week on March 8th, two weeks on March 8th. Any questions?
Questions, also time for council comments. Seeing and hearing none, I declare the public hearing is closed at 7:14 PM. Is there a motion to approve the items? Shall move, Your Honor?
Second.
Any second? Thanks, there is a second. Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. On to the next item, please.
Public hearing and resolution adopting the 2021 amendment to the plan for the Marshalltown urban revitalization area number two.
This public hearing is open at 7:15 PM. Did you receive any written clerk, any written comments to the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Let's open the mics and phones and computers and any other way to talk.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Unmute everybody and let's have staff review.
Yes, this is to the public hearing to amend the urban revitalization area for area number two, which is a large swath of land that is basically kind of south of downtown, but also east of, basically the east side of town as well. And so, this is a commercial urban revitalization area, and this is to add two specific properties, which is 201 East Anson Street, which is directly adjacent, as well as 306 West High Street, which is directly adjacent in our, in some areas where some redevelopment is starting to occur.
Thank you. Any council comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I have a question for the city administrator. Jessica, when you say they're adjacent, they are, you can confirm they are abutting the current, these aren't standalone, they are abutting those urban renewal areas as they are mapped right now?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. I declare the public hearing is closed at 7:17 PM and invite a motion to approve it.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
Second.
Hold call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. On to the next major item, which is ordinances. Please tell us what the first one would be.
Ordinance 15010, adopting the 2020 National Electric Code, third reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second.
Thank you. Very good. Discussion.
Your Honor, the National Electric Code is updated every three years to modify the existing rules, and the state of Iowa has adopted the 2020 code, and our city code coincides with that, so our electrical inspector has recommended we adopt this code in its entirety with no exceptions.
Sure. Thank you. Any council comments or questions before we open the mics? Open the mics.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carried, thank you. Unable, go on to number two.
Ordinance 15013, amending ordinance number 14215 to add properties to the legal description of property included in Marshalltown urban revitalization area number two, first reading.
Is the staff requesting that we have all three readings, or would you like me to elicit a motion to waive the other two?
We are not requesting a waiver of any of the readings.
Okay. Well, I'd solicit a motion then to approve the ordinance.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any second?
Second, Your Honor.
Go with Mr. Thompson on the second, but that was a close call. Discussion by council.
I'll just do a quick little staff review, which is, this is directly related to the public hearing that was just held on adding the land to urban revitalization area number two, that ultimately to effect that change requires an ordinance to be passed with that change to it. So, this is the first reading of the ordinance to actually affect the change that was just held in the public hearing.
Thanks. With that staff comment, any questions or comments by the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, what do you anticipate this is going to cost us by including these two properties?
In terms of immediate cost, meaning legal cost, or in terms of long-term?
Long-term, because obviously, we're doing this because there is development already started.
I honestly don't know. There's not been any site plans or anything submitted for either property. I do believe that the property on High Street would actually require rezoning in order for it to be eligible for development there to be, well, for development there to be eligible for this if it was commercial.
And the property on Anson Street, has he started with his plans to build?
There's been nothing submitted in terms of a site plan or anything to the building department.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other council comments or questions? Let's open the mics and unmute.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Roll call by my watch.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. It's kind of fun to see commercial development in that area, too. How about number three? When ready?
Ordinance 15014, an ordinance approving the rezoning of 802 East Southridge Road to R2A Low Density Residential, first reading.
Call for motion first.
So moved, Your Honor.
Call for second.
Second.
Let's have staff comment.
Hey, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. This is the first reading of a rezoning request for the parcel, as shown there in your memo, highlighted in blue. This is originally part of the Sugar Creek Estates Planted Unit Development, which included the duplexes and things along there just to the west. This parcel is kind of split with a little bit of that waterway, it separates it from the rest of the development, and it's been vacant for many, many years in that fashion, not able to develop. Originally, it was thought that there might be some multifamily housing development on that, back when the Sugar Creek Estates PUD was first put in place, almost 20-plus years ago. Now, we have an owner who is interested or has purchased the parcel with intent to build just a single-family home, and so rather than amending the PUD and going through a process, lengthy process with the planning commission and the council for a single-family residence, we recommended that the property just be rezoned. R2A district is adjacent to the east, the larger parcel, and so we thought to be most consistent with adjoining districts, that we would recommend the R2A zoning classification, which does allow just for a single-family or two-family dwelling unit to be constructed. So, it is just proposed for one lot, one house, not looking at any kind of subdivision at this point or intended for this property. The commission did have a public hearing at their last meeting on February 11th and recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Michelle? Open the mics and phone lines.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Very good. It's amazing how much construction of new housing we're experiencing in this city. That's just really encouraging. All right, on to the next item I, discussion, and the first one is discussion of use of sale proceeds from Southridge Estates. Is there anyone who'd like to start that discussion?
Yes, your honor, I'll take that. And you segue very nicely into this discussion. We are coming up on the closing date of March 8th for selling the Southridge Estates property to Rosemont, or I should say, there's now Southridge LLC. They changed their name for this transaction, started a new LLC. And so one of the things that we like to discuss kind of before we get a check and have to then hold on to a check potentially, rather than getting it deposited right away, is what would you like to do with the funds? We are anticipating around $128,000 less closing costs and everything else that goes along with this. There's a little over $97,000 that the council did originally put towards this out of the council-designated local option sales tax, which could be reimbursed. And then just a few other suggestions that I wanted to throw out there was really some other things we have related to housing, which is, you know, that we've pledged $250,000 towards the new housing incentive, which would also come out of local option sales tax. The council could create a new special revenue fund related to the support of housing with restrictions or uses to be defined. And then another one that's really coming to be more immediate, the Marshalltown Community Development Corporation has submitted everything to the IRS to gain a nonprofit status, and they will be certainly looking for some seed money to get started in their process of taking a hand in redeveloping certain areas of the community. And so I wanted to throw that out there. I also mentioned it in my memo and then want to just say it again, that in 2018, towards the end of the year, things were looking bleak after the tornado and this property came on the market. And after, you know, quite a few discussions, you know, it was really decided that this was something that the council was willing to take the risk of buying the entire property to make South Seventh Avenue access happen there and help solve a code compliance issue. And so we don't often take risks in government. We're a little bit risk averse, and this was one that I think has really paid off, and I'm happy to be able to have this discussion with you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over for feedback. Anything would probably need to come back on a resolution for the next council meeting to effectuate that change.
Thank you. Let's call for discussion among the council members.
Jessica, I have a question.
Yes. The splash pad that's been pushed back to next year or is planned for next year, that's right around $250,000?
I believe it's actually in the budget for fiscal year '24. It's not for fiscal year '22.
Okay. Because I was wondering if we could earmark, start earmarking money and moving that up sooner?
Yeah, you certainly could. These funds are coming in basically as sale proceeds, and so they can be earmarked for whatever the council would like to earmark them for.
Okay. Was the original plan for the splash pad supposed to be bonding?
That is correct.
Okay, so we would be saving money by not bonding and using cash for part of it, then?
Possibly. Again, it was not in our bonding picture until much later on, and we're not planning, you know, to talk about bonding further until probably June, when we have the downtown implementation plan completed, to bring back to you kind of all the options for what this next year would look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Yep, your honor, this is Gabe. I guess from the three options, being that this was taken from lost, that we've already decided for the pledge for the $250,000 new home incentive, which I think supports the third bullet, I guess my opinion would be that this goes back into lost, especially not knowing clearly where we will be future down the road, and sometimes the immediate future, especially with the derecho coming down the road. So my preference would probably be that we put that back into lost, at least at this current time.
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, when we sold buildings, did we have a policy in place that proceeds went into building repair?
Yes. So when buildings are sold, the proceeds go into Fund 031, which is the Building Maintenance Fund.
Have we ever, have we ever sold land before?
We've sold a lot of vacant lots that have mostly been part of the D and D program.
Outside of that, I understand.
Yeah. I don't recall that we have really outside of the D and D program.
So by existing policy, unless we change that, shouldn't this go into building repair fund?
I believe it's just selling a city facility is how that's defined in that policy.
Okay. If that's the case, then I would have to agree with Councilman Isom that, you know, if we don't have a way to reseed lost with the money that's been coming out of there, and I've got to believe that that revenue is going to be weighed down to cede that account, I don't see an alternative today with the information we have that there's a better alternative than putting this back into local option sales tax, where there's been a ton of money flowing out of. And like Councilman Isom said, we talked about this a few weeks ago, that we're going to be fighting this deratio recovery for the next three years, four years. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Other council comments? Let's let the public discuss this as well.
The lines are unmuted, your honor.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mark Eaton, 1007, South 10th Avenue. I agree with Councilman Isom and Councilman Thompson. I think it should go back into lost. I don't think we need to fund nonprofit organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. I had that at about 12 seconds. Let's go ahead and leave the mics open for another three. Okay. Mr. Isom, is that a motion to put those funds into lost?
Jessica, do we need a motion now, or do you?
Yeah, I was going to say I'd like to at least know if we bring a resolution back to the council meeting next meeting, that there's going to be for people who think this is a good idea. So my preference would be to have a motion right now to make sure this is something that the council would like to proceed with.
So moved, your honor.
Thompson will go with this. Okay, we have a second. We've already called for other discussion. I doubt we need any further. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Okay. Staff has its direction. On to the next discussion item, which is zoning ordinance updates related to downtown design guidelines and Highway 14 corridor. Staff wanting to lead discussion?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Bringing this before you as kind of an update, obviously 2020 kind of stirred up a lot of our processes in terms of code updates with limitations for some of the discussions and public interactions. We began early or late 2019, really starting to implement our downtown design guideline, code review, as well as the Highway 14 corridor expansion of what we were ultimately calling a mixed-use district, creation of a mixed-use district for the corridor. Those were two projects that we were in the heart of right at the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, working with Bolton and Mink on both of those projects. We ultimately throughout this year decided, had a lot more conversation about our zoning update as a whole, and have since put out that request for proposals, hired Kandig Keast Collaborative to begin that process. In talking with Bolton and Mink, who is also a partner on that project as well, as staff and consultant, we really feel that these are all very tied together, these three things. And to best utilize all of that time that we spent kind of working on that and to not spend a lot of extra resources to adopt a code that's going to ultimately change at the end of the year, that we take the work that has been done on the drafting of those ordinances, and the research that has been done, that we put that into our overall zoning update process. So we know that when we do rewrite our entire ordinance, we're going to have a lot of what I'll call technical changes in terms of code numbering and formatting and those types of things. Some of the references to some of our districts may change entirely as well. And so we know that we're going to have a significant amount of changes to go through. And so in an effort to try to keep that all consistent, we feel that it's best to wrap these all together into one project. There should not be any additional budget costs to do this. All the, what I'll call the foundational work is really done. It's just going to be a matter of implementing those new languages in with our overall rewrite. So we'll be able to close out the projects that we had open for the downtown design guideline specifically. We had that as a separate funding, and it's not going to increase the budget on the Kandig Keast contract either. So we know that that work was already going to be happening. And so I feel that that would be a good solution for us to kind of bring everything together. We will go through a number of still public sessions, discussions, hearings, ordinance revisions as part of the overall zoning update. Those things will be happening primarily in the final or in the formal process late this year into maybe the start of 2022. So we'll still have a lot of opportunity for input on all of these topics. So the downtown guidelines, the mixed-use district, as well as all the other changes that we'll be going through. That will still take place throughout this year as we move through that process. So that'd be my recommendation, but we wanted to bring it forward to make sure that you, as a council, are also on board with that process, knowing that we won't be implementing the design guideline or the mixed-use district prior to that overall update.
Before calling for questions or comments, I'm tempted to ask if any of the councilors object to going forward and having the staff pursue this.
I do have one, I do have one question for Michelle, if you would, your honor.
Sure.
Michelle, is there anybody out there right now that you've had conversations with that is waiting for one of these changes? Because if we don't do this on the original schedule we told them, now they're going to have to go through planning and zoning, and they could get denied there rather than wait for the change that they thought was coming. Is there anybody that you know of in the near future that this is going to hamper them?
No, I don't see any negative impact to anybody out there currently. Probably the largest space that would have been impacted most directly would have been the Unity Point Campus, recognizing that that's an area for redevelopment. Certainly, they're not going to be doing anything until they vacated their site. So I feel like we have plenty of time to work through that process and still benefit that. If we had a specific rezoning request or something that came forward in any of these areas that we felt, we certainly can accommodate those and work through those processes as an applicant. But I don't, I don't feel like there's anything that's out there in the wings waiting for this process to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to make sure we weren't closing the door on somebody that had something in progress.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you for asking. Other comments or questions by the council? If not, I guess what I really was asking for, does anybody object to having Michelle and her staff spend the time going forward on this so that we could cut her off at the past now instead?
Yeah, I don't feel that we need a resolution or anything for this. I just wanted to bring it forward. And I did want to also just remind or let you know, we just posted an agenda for this Thursday at 2:00 for a joint Planning Commission, Council, and Board of Adjustment presentation on an update on the zoning ordinance, just so you can kind of see where we're at with that process. So that'll be a public meeting. We'll have it as a go-to meeting with the link. We certainly encourage you to tap into that. The presentation will be posted here shortly as well. So if you're not able to make that specifically, you can at least look at the PowerPoint, and we'll try to do our best to even try recording that. We've had that request. So we're still working through that process, and I encourage you to participate in that update presentation coming up this Thursday.
At 2:00.
At 2:00.
I think I thought I saw something, an email or something on social media today, too, about a public meeting coming up with the downtown planning group. It seemed like it was March 8th or so.
That is for the downtown implementation plan. We have set an event for a virtual open house. More details will be coming up on that, but it is scheduled for March 10th. So that's a separate project, but still certainly related to our downtown, and those things do overlap. So I encourage people to attend that as well. More details will be coming on Facebook and the city website for that.
Okay. In case there is somebody who's a zoning guru out there in the public that wishes to comment on this item, let's open the phone lines and mics and whatever.
The microphones are unmuted.
By the way, I was glad when you guys finally unmuted, so I could hear the council meeting. That was weird. All right, 15 seconds is up. Staff really has its direction. Let's go on to the third and final discussion item, RFP for Real Estate Services for Edgewood Property.
Yes. In your packet was a draft RFP that I would like to issue. I'm not looking for a resolution or anything here, but just a direction to move forward. We are getting much closer to being able to talk about selling property, and I've had contact through the chamber from an entity that is interested in buying some of the lots that are going to be here. The preliminary plat will be going forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission on their March 11th meeting. I believe it's March 11th. And so that'll really kind of get things started. Ultimately, the lots will actually not be available for closing and for occupancy until probably much later in this year, just due to the project creating inaccessible conditions as we install sanitary sewer, storm sewer, as well as the roads. So, but we've had some interest in it, so we wanted to get this out there on the market as quickly as possible. And we see that because there's such a large number of lots and a decent amount of property of around 45 acres, that we are, I'm recommending that we use a realtor to do this listing and to be our point of contact.
Okay. Comments or questions? Kind of exciting to have interest already. Wow. Well, unless somebody's walking up to the microphone, it got kind of quiet. All I hear is crickets. Let's open the, let's unmute again.
Lines are unmuted.
It's Mark Eaton, 1007 again. We have an Economic Development Council or service provided to the city. I don't know what's happened to that since the party in charge of that left. And people are contacting the chamber about this, and the chamber has real estate posted on their website for sale. I don't know why the city needs to pay a realtor to market this, since obviously we've got people asking the chamber, and we have an attorney that can file the paperwork. So we don't really need a real estate agent to spend money on. Thank you.
Thank you. That was about 10 seconds into our typical 15 seconds. Let's keep them open for another five. Let's mute everybody and go on to item J, which is public comment. And I need to read this long caveat that the members of the public may make comments on any item not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless longer. Comments authorized by me. Speak, your comments directly to Speak your comments directly to the mayor and council as a whole. And the mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public at this time, and no action may be taken on those items at this time, else we would be in noncompliance with the open meetings laws. Does anybody wish to approach the microphone in the council chambers or unmuted on the phone lines or computers?
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 again. We've suspended many building codes as a result of the duratio. Don't know when those are going to come back into effect, but we just passed a new one with the electric code. And that has significant impact on buildings and fixing properties. Entrances, service entrances for the electrical system have to have a disconnect now, and you have to have whole-house surge suppression and a few other things that are new to the code. Are we enforcing that code, or are we suspending it?
Okay, well, I didn't hear a voluntary response by staff or the mayor or the councilors. But the microphone is still open if anybody else wishes to comment. And hearing no further comment, I declare that we are adjourned at 7:47 PM. Thanks, folks, for attending. See you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.